Call the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council Work Session. Tonight is October 24th, 2022, and it's seven o'clock. I have all five council present and I want to welcome everyone. We have a bigger group than normal. That's wonderful. This is a work session with less formal rules than a council meeting, so discussion can occur. I want to make sure everyone in attendance who wants to speak gets to speak. And so I know some may not be able to stay for the whole meeting. Does anyone want to speak now before we start the work session? Okay, we'll go ahead and start. The first subject that we're going to start tonight is the zoning ordinance. Provisions related to uses of garages and accessory structures. And I'll have Steve Ballard, our city attorney, give background information before each topic. And Steve, do you want to go ahead and start?
Sure. This was addressed in the monthly legal report with a comment or a recommendation from the Board of Adjustment that the council looked into this issue. And one of the things, well, I think what prompted that particular request from the board was that a person had applied to put up a garage and it met some of the, it met the setback, but there was a question about dimensions and the Board of Adjustment resolved that that question about dimensions. But the plans, you know, showed that it didn't look in some ways like it was intended to be used at what, for what most people would consider a garage. It had two bathrooms, it had a second floor deck, some other features. Looked like it was going to be, you know, kind of a tailgating emporium, which I think that is what it probably will be. You know, what our ordinance says is that a garage is something that will accommodate a motor driven vehicle, you know, a car, a motorcycle, something like that. After that, it doesn't speak to what you can really use it for, except that it says you can't have living quarters. So, um, so that's, that's the question. I think one way to say it is, what about the idea that more and more garages might be renovated or installed to be more tailgating houses or activities, structures, venues, you might say. And then in addition, there were a couple of inquiries this fall that I fielded just about people saying, yeah, you know, why can't people, why can't you have living quarters in a garage? You know, like the mother-in-law's apartment is what some people call it. Why is that a bad idea? You know, people are finding that modest sized homes in the community don't accommodate their families or their growing families or their particular needs, whether it's family or not. And so that's the question is just, is it time to revisit the uses of a garage or an accessory structure? Expand them, restrict them further, whatever. That's the background, I would say.
Thank you, Steve. I see there's a few members of the Board of Adjustment here and so thank you for attending tonight. Who would like to start some discussion on what the council direction, planning would be with this? What what is the council's desire to address this? If you want to even address it?
I think we should definitely address it. And sorry. You know, when you ask about including a living space in a garage, I remember back in the 2018 council when we discussed some of these things and, you know, a living space over a garage for a particular family turns into a rental, turns into two groups of people living in a property. And we have had an issue where I am with properties, you know, that were built as single family homes. And now they're sort of duplexes, although they don't, they're not actual duplexes. They have more parking, more paving, more people. I know that our housing inspector at the time talked about some of our smaller houses in town that were never intended for more than one family and it's stresses the neighborhood, so to speak, stresses the property. He probably would have been able to describe it better, but that would be a definite concern that I would have, especially where I live in my part of town with our small properties, small homes.
Yeah, I could add on to that. This is Tim. I can't really see, you know, my kids are grown up, but I can't really see putting kids in a separate structure above a garage, your own kids. And maybe it would be a mother-in-law, but yes, after that initial use, then what does it become? Certainly, probably a rental place. But as far as limiting the use of a garage, I have a hard time seeing how we can really limit the use of a garage. So nobody can have a party within their garage. That seems a bit controlling.
Do you think, do you think, Tim, there's a difference between a for example, a homeowner using a garage for a party, for their own party, so on, basically, versus a, for, you know, for example landlord or someone who just owns a rental property using it for a party, whether it's, I guess, whether it's their own party or whether it's a, you know, they're just renting it out for money essentially. Do you see any difference or differentiating there?
Yeah. I don't know the legalities of limiting the use for rental properties versus you know, people that are permanent dwellers. But certainly want to promote the flexibility for those who are, you know, permanent dwellers of University Heights.
Sorry, perhaps look at some options like, I mean, the garage that was proposed was a thousand square feet, almost the entire square footage of the house, not just the footprint of the house. But then having, having two bathrooms in it, having kitchen facility, something along those lines. I mean, and I would say maybe definitely the deck on top of the garage next to the neighbor's property, anything along those lines that might be a possibility.
Yeah, the bummer of the way the zoning ordinance is written right now is that they could put a three foot space in between two garages and just build it that way. And it would meet the the zoning, which that will just look funny and be a aberration in University Heights. So it, it seems like there needs to be clarity to the ordinance itself, and it could be something to do with the proportion of the size of the garage to the home and that sort of thing, like you were alluding to. But
So Tim and probably Steve Ballard, is it, is it written such a way? So if you have a detached garage or an accessory structure, it can't be more than one third of the back of the rear, you know, setback, right? So that's as the size of the garage, but you're saying you could actually build two garages and make them, you know, each less than one third of the area of the rear setback and you would fall within the, is that what?
It's, go ahead, Tim.
I, I don't know for sure if that was approved, but that was the proposed solution by the landowner.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little funkier than, than what, what Tim outlined is accurate in terms of history of that property. Bobby, it's a little funkier than the way you described it. So it's, you're only limited to one third the size of the rear setback if some part of the garage is in the rear setback. If your lot is deep enough that you can, you can start the garage 60 feet back from the front lot line, which is required. Then, and, and you're not going to be in the rear setback with any part of your garage, then you're not limited on, on square footage. There's not a size limitation.
Say that last part again. I don't think I try, I was tracking with you.
Yeah, the only, the only time that, that you have a limitation that the size of the garage can only be one third, the area of the rear setback is if part of the garage is in the rear setback. And so this particular example, the owner said, well, look, a small part of my garage is going to be in the rear setback. But the bigger, much bigger part is not in the rear setback. So it's, it's just the part in the setback that can't be a third. And the zoning, the Board of Adjustment, my recommendation said, no, if any part is in the rear setback, then the whole thing can't exceed one third. And he said, well, then I'll just build two. The one that goes into the rear setback, the area of that one won't exceed one third. And the other one, there is no one third limitation. It's just that it has to be 60 feet back from the front property line, all of which is true. And in fact, he has since applied to do just that and build two structures, three, three feet apart, which complies with the ordinance. So the size limitation isn't triggered unless part of it's in the rear setback, Bobby. That's my point.
Otherwise you count, Steve, right? You count the front to the back. I mean, I mean, that's added into it if there's not this space. The front counts of the garage counts to the back, then it adds together. Is that right?
No, it doesn't add together. The only, it's like, like if this, this person does what he's proposing, he's going to have two structures. One of them, one of them encroaches, if you want to say it, one of them goes into the rear setback. Or that, that, that garage can only be one third, the area of the rear setback. But his other garage is not in the rear setback. So all it has to be is 60 feet back from the property line, and there is no size limitation.
Right, right.
One third of anything. Yeah.
What would be the problem with that? What's, what's everyone's fears and reservations about what you do in your backyard with garages? What's, what's what's everyone's fears and like, say, reservations about that?
But this is a rental property, I believe. And what he's proposing is a tailgating enterprise. I mean, for all we know, and what I would expect, expect might start to happen other places is people buying property because in University Heights, you can build a structure to have to sell tailgating. And I don't mean you doing it on your property. I mean, owning a property, turning it into a rental property and then having it, or an Airbnb and then having the tailgating party there. And that's what the property is for, which I would be concerned then makes any property in town, more properties in town liable to become the same thing if we don't try to pet it off in some way. And I wonder if Steve has any suggestions of how to do that or anyone else?
Yeah, I, I think that I think I would need to know more what people, how you want to do limitations. If it's, if it's size, something like Tim suggested. Well, you could just have a size restriction, you know, right now it says, as I've said already, one, if it goes into the rear setback at all, the garage can only be one third the size of the rear setback. You could say, it doesn't matter where it is. It has to be 60 feet back and it can only be 400 square feet, 500 square feet, whatever number of square feet. You could say it can't be any more than, you know, X percent of the footprint of the main structure on the, on the lot. So there are ways to limit size. Limiting use, well, so like the commercial nature of a tailgate. So if somebody says, I want to just build a, a tailgating venue and whether I live in this home or I rent the home, that's separate. And I'm not talking about having my friends come over and tailgate. I am going to, you know, somebody's going to write me a check and seven Saturdays a year, they're going to run the tailgate. And they can have people in and charge them money for tailgating and I'm going to let them, I'm going to let them, you know, they can handle the parking and they're just going to pay me and they can, they can run this thing. I think there are ways to prohibit that. You know, you could say, well, we're just pretty comfortable saying that in an accessory structure, you can't have plumbing, which probably is just, is a reach. I mean, depending on what you want to do. So you could say, okay, you can't have a bathroom. And somebody still might say, well, that's inconvenient. I like to work on my car or whatever. I don't know. But you could, you could try to, I mean, you could certainly approach things that way. In any of those ways.
The intended usage, I guess, is what's in question. I mean, if I have the property and I want to put up a garage and and I'm going to put a bathroom in there. And if I want to put a couch in there or whatever, I mean, I want to, and I, I do own the property. I do pay the taxes and and the, I, I just feel that as a property owner, I should have the freedom to have, say, what I do with my property. And I don't know how many people feel, but it's kind of a slippery slope. I mean, I definitely don't want it to be commercialized, but at the same time, I don't want somebody to tell me what I can and cannot do on my own property, you know, within reason, and it doesn't affect somebody else, which is kind of how I view anything is it, will it affect anybody? Well, now we got a problem if it does, but if it doesn't affect anybody like me having a garage with a bathroom in the back, like big whoop. I don't understand what the, the problem is with that, but if you do turn it into a party headquarters, well, yeah, now we're talking again, intended usage. So we gotta, I guess, look far enough ahead that we don't get ourselves painted into a corner with the just open usage.
I think, I think that's what the whole intent of this conversation is too, is like, we just have to decide what we want or, you know, what what we want city or University Heights basically to be or to become, or is it a, is it owner occupied kind of, is that the goal? A strong community? I like, at least that's how I think about it, like owner occupied, strong community, you know, just in terms of people living there and that's kind of encouraging or or will it just become a kind of a, I don't know. Just a, just a place where it's primarily rental houses and so on and so forth. I feel like unless you're intentional with one, with, with it, it will just become a, you know, a community of rentals or whatever. And that's, I think the question at heart, I feel like, I don't know if you guys, the rest of the council would agree with that, but that's kind of the, that's what I feel like the big question that we're kind of getting at is, what do you guys think?
I agree with Doug that landowners should have the maximum flexibility to do what they can. And that comes from my background. I want to have some creativity to do something as a designer and not be restricted by ordinances designed for the lowest common denominator. If we want to make it this place attractive for live-in owners, we got to make it, you know, fun and exciting, not just design ordinances for the worst situation. We want to draw people here in my mind. And although I share your concern, Lisa, I feel like we're, we're going down a path that's not going to help us. It'll label us as being more, you know, very restrictive and conservative.
I mean, Tim, I love what you're saying. I love this perspective on the two different, I love your perspective. I just don't know how that practically works, like.
I don't either.
Yeah, I know. I'm with you. Like, I don't want to be this, you know, kind of nitpicky, you know, community where, you know, it's everyone's like, oh, that's every, you know, you know, I mean, just bad reputation for whatever. But I don't, I do want it to, I, you know, if I was, I wouldn't want to buy a house personally. And maybe this, I wouldn't want to buy a house that's right next to a party barn, you know, for tailgating, because I wouldn't want to raise my kids there and so on and so forth. You know, that's just, that's just the reality of it. Now, maybe as the city council, we're saying, well, Bobby, you're not the kind of family we want here. That's okay too. If we, if you, we, whatever decide that, you know, and I mean that, I'm not just saying that, you know, facetiously, I'm just being, but we do have to decide that as a city council, you know, I don't know, just thinking out loud, so.
Well, right now I can tell you, if you had like a, you know, as well as I do, the she sheds are a big thing right now. And to me, if you came into University Heights, I'm looking to buy a house and you walk around back and there's this nice little building there that, oh my God, to me, that's pure bonus. I think that would only increase the property value and more family generated people looking for houses, I think in University Heights versus the old 1960s traditional two bedroom, three bedroom houses, you know, I, I think it's kind of a way of modernizing, you know, the way our society or culture sees like she sheds and stuff. I mean, that's, that's a big thing right now.
Well, I
Go ahead, Lisa. Sorry.
No, that's fine. It's, sorry. This meeting were in person, I wouldn't be here. So please excuse my sorry delivery. I have written something out. It's kind of wordy, but I've talked to a lot of neighbors on some issues. It really wasn't so much about this, but if you are willing to hear it, I see some of my neighbors are here and by neighbors, I mean anybody that lives here. You know, they can speak for themselves, but other people told me they weren't comfortable. They didn't want their neighbors to think ill of them for having a contrary opinion. Now, and I'm going to just say, you know, fellowship of the ring, Galadriel, your quest stands upon the edge of a knife, stray but a little, and it will fail to the ruin of all. And to me, the, all three items on this agenda are asking us exactly what Bobby said. What's the vision for University Heights? As, as a council and as residents, is it to further the work begun by the 2016 and 2018 councils? To keep University Heights a desirable place to own property or live? Or are we going to let it slide into the, to becoming the place to purchase investment property for tailgating enterprises? And game day cribs, which there's already one of those in the 300 block of Cozer. Yeah, we need to peer into the unforeseeable future. Think about unintended consequences and action and inaction on our part. And we're going to have to make some tough decisions. I agree. These aren't easy questions. You know, we just need to do what's best for the city as a whole and think about those unintended consequences. You know, my part of town isn't like where you live, any of you. Even Steph, she lives in a, you know, on a spur. She backs onto Iowa City in a way. She's got a ravine over there. Some of you, I mean, I looked at that aerial view of your neighborhood and it's like, you're living in protected, wonderful, protected cocoons. I'm not. In my part of town, I couldn't put up a privacy fence that would give me an ounce of privacy. And I, my backyard adjoins, and I don't mean at the corners, for 20 feet at least, it adjoins five other properties. And so when people do something in their backyard, it's going to affect me. And if I do something in my yard, it's going to affect them. And it's hard to work through a city as a whole, but I think you have to do that. And consider that other parts of town are not the same as where you live. And I have had neighbors, I'm just going to speak for my neighbors because I talked to 15 to 20 residents and I don't present this as the majority opinion or this is what everybody thinks. You know, but they talk about the city council as they don't, they may walk through our neighborhood, but they don't know what it's like to live here and put up with rentals and game days. They don't have the same living experience that we have. And some of them go so far to say, and they don't care. And I, I do tell them, yeah, I think they do, but I don't know that they have come over and looked at my property. So you know, all rentals aren't bad, but a healthy percentage would be nice. And game day is fine if we have, you know, respectful tailgaters. But messing around with the zoning ordinance to let people in your part of town, you know, do what they want. It's probably going to make some of us have to look a little harder at where we live. I don't know. I love my property. I have a large yard. I poured blood, sweat and tears into it. You know, and I just, you know, I want my part of town, you know, my living situation to be part of what you consider. So you know, I know you, you, you don't want to restrict too much and you want to have the ability to do things, but you don't get to do whatever you want to do on your property in any city, except, I don't know, maybe Houston. So.
A comment, Louise?
Yes, I was just gonna, is that, who's this speaking?
This is Sylvia Casada.
Oh, thanks Sylvia. I, I noticed, I was just going to get to it that there's three people that want to speak. I think it was you and Sheila and maybe Deb Tunwall, I think. So go ahead.
Certainly. I really do want to say I appreciate hearing the counselor's arguments, in particular, the ones with respect to creativity, to do what I want with my property. And the other one with, you know, if it's your property, do whatever you'd like with it. Those comments are well noted, but what's missing in this conversation, and it's a glaring miss, is the tenants. No one here at the table is discussing how this garage that is equal size to the space of the house with two bathrooms, a kitchen and yada, yada, is going to impact the tenants. The tenants are already being impacted in University Heights to their detriment. Just take a look at the two houses that University Heights brought into the community two years ago, actually four years ago, when we had the hotel. They were really slum houses. They were very bad. Well, maybe Mike Ritchie's was a little better, but that other house on the, on the western side of had terrible, it had cling film all over the windows. And so the point is the, the counselors that are speaking about property rights and do what you want, these people are already doing what they want. They're renting the houses. That's the business of renting. What you're introducing is venue, venue, running a venue on game day. We, as a council and as a community, we objected many years ago and we implemented an ordinance that said, we don't want to be a commuter parking lot. We object to that use. Either the landlords are going to be in the business of renting or the landlords are going to be in the business of renting pavement. Pick your business. This is a residential community.
Did you go on mute? We can't hear you now.
Much of that has been conserved because of the good work of the ordinances that were revised a few years back. We have the zoning process for appeals and for vetting any variances. If, you know, there's still an out for that. I don't think the ordinance should be disturbed because it is protecting our residential character and the primary business. These landlords invest in University Heights, which is renting to graduate students, medical students, university students. So let's, I would like to see this council not get confused with property rights and what business you have, you have purchased into University Heights, because it's very clear all around you that the business these landlords are in. That the business these landlords are in is rental housing. If you're gonna open that up tomorrow, you need much better reasoning than what you have presented tonight.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Deb Tunwall, did you wanna speak tonight?
Um, well, not necessarily, um, but some of the decisions you are making are going to affect what we're. Planning to do with our property. Um, I didn't really realize that was the subject of tonight's meeting, um, but I put it in the chat. I don't know how you. Um, write an ordinance against people who are going to be using a garage possibly. For something we don't uh, believe is acceptable, but you have to realize that there are people that live in areas with small. Older historic homes that have very small footprints and we feel like we're outgrowing our space. And we don't have a usable basement because it's a nineteen twenty-six damp basement. And we would like to build a garage that has a hobby space above. We weren't doing a, uh, planning on doing plumbing because we didn't think that was allowed and we never want it to be rented out. And we would like to attach a shop to it, so if you start limiting sizes of accessory structures, you're actually going to impact people. Who want to have their homes be forever homes and have them be able to evolve into something that's a little bit more usable. So just keep that in mind. I don't think it's a, a one size fits all, excuse me, getting a cold. I don't think it's a one size fits all for University Heights, because there's so many different types of ages. Um, of homes in this neighborhoods. I don't know how you write a blanket ordinance for all of these homes.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, did someone else wanna speak? Sheila, did you wanna speak? Not, or, I don't know, I mean, it seemed like there was some, Mike said you had some question or comment. You're on mute.
Yep, should be off now, yeah, just wondering if there's anything that has addressed, you know, permitted. Permeability or impermeability of a lot, and I appreciate where Deb is coming from in terms of the vast uh. Structures in terms of, you know, nineteen twenties to, you know, current state. Um, but that's where the appeal process, you know, would, would come into play, you know, in those types of situations. But it's, you know, it seems like the, the one-third lot doesn't necessarily address. You know, impacting um, environmental uh, statuses within the community.
Thank you, Sheila.
Louise, can I say something? I don't know how to raise my hand on this.
Oh, I see, Mike, Mike Ritchie, okay.
Yeah, I, I was kinda gonna wanna be quiet until Sylvia kinda drug my name into this thing here. But um. The, the thing that I really uh, catch on this meeting is, is still the, the old um. Restrains and stuff that you guys uh, have, or the problems that you have with rental properties. And you, you know, your biggest problem in a University Heights with your rental properties. Has always been your property management companies, because they don't care, all they're wanting to do is have the place rented out. If uh, one of the tenants complains uh, about the conditions that they're in. To the property management, it goes nowhere. And to, to have restrictions, you know, to separate the rental properties and the owner occupied to me. Is um, being somewhat prejudiced and stuff on what we're doing. You know, the, the house that I still own over there, twenty Olive Court. There's not much you could do with that house except for rental. I know that they did a uh, uh, quite a renovation on twenty-four Olive Court. But even on the renovation of twenty-four Olive Court with your ordinances and stuff. Restricted that house from being a really nice place, which it's a nice place right now, but you've got a one-car garage. And they got two cars over there and they're always jockeying around cars and stuff on. So some of these uh, restrictions that you got are detriment to some of these uh, homes that you're wanting to have. Uh, owner po- occupied in, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, anyone else from the public wanna speak? We weren't sure, if you can just speak, if you wanna speak and identify yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Pat, Yegi, okay.
Uh, this is Pat Yegi, I'm, I'm the chair of the zoning commission. So the zoning um, ordinances that are enforced today. Those were recommended by the zoning commission after direction from the council as to what the rules should be. And public input was requested to get these rules. But when there's new issues that arise like this perhaps, then um, coun- or if council prefers to take a different direction on how things. Uh, are handled, then it's time to consider changes um, to the ordinance, so um. I mean, I think there are a lot of questions about doing this. For one thing, I don't think anybody wants to live next to, next door to a purpose-built. Football venue. And I think, I think people should certainly be allowed to have their own private use of their property. But once again, I don't think anybody wants to live next to a purpose-built football facility.
Thank you, Pat. Um, did anyone else from the public wanna speak? They should just uh, get off mute, or. If they can.
Louise, I would like to speak only insofar as I was driving and I don't know if my reception was clear, but. My biggest concern about the comments that three, like two councillors have made, I'm not sure if I heard Bobby express the same. But a- again, it goes down to what business is the landlord um, doing? Is it a business of venue renting at the expense of his tenants? Or is this landlord in the business of a rental property? So, you know, the argument is that I'm hearing from at least the two um, councillors that are in favor. Of starting to chop up this ordinance is that, you know, the right to improve their property, use it as they will, but my point is. No improvements are being made to the tenants' properties that they're living in. I have personally spoken to many uh, tenants, some of whom um, live on Highland. And they have at least one bathroom that is external to their home. And the landlord rents, makes that available at the expense of the tenants. Who are also paying for that water and electricity to be used by tailgaters on tailgating day. And those tenants have very little bargaining rights to improve their position. And it just really says not a whole lot about how much our tenants are valued and, and you know, rentals are a part in reality of University Heights. And our tenants deserve a little bit more protection and discussion by these, by this council. As, as they consider anything about opening up this ordinance, which took a lot of time to put together. A lot of different reviews, a lot of different public feedback, and again, what is it that you're all after? Is it, you're gonna be opening up the rental landlord business to ancillary businesses? Because if you are, then you are changing and disturbing the residential character of our community. And that deserves a citywide discussion, not a few councillors. Who haven't had the opportunity or the interest of showing up and door knocking, or much less being met at a forum. Where people get to know what their values and their vision for University Heights is.
Being put in our mouths there as we were speaking to people that live in their property. And I agree with Sylvia that when you have a rental property, you shouldn't be able to. Kick out the tenants on game day and dis- inconvenience them, my daughter had to live through that, so. I don't disagree with any, anything you're saying, so I think those words were taken out of context. But when you are a live-in owner and you're paying the taxes, as Doug said, and. There should be maximum flexibility. I'm not saying throw out the zoning ordinance either, but the problem is recent submission. Had a different interpretation from the building official as it did from the city attorney. And it ended up that a gro- two garages, three foot apart could be built on that site, so that's a problem, needs to be fixed.
And we can have, it's not an either or situation, two things can be true, okay? So it doesn't mean either or, and I, I would like to speak to, I mean, I am very sympathetic to tenants' rights and I understand that, but. Um, you gotta remember you are free to move if, if it doesn't feel right for you. I mean, there's no law saying you have to live where you are. So if you don't feel like you're being accommodated for, the windows are covered in plastic, I mean, you can move. I mean, that's the power as a tenant, you can move, or, or, you know, the landlord is gonna, you know, make the changes needed to, you know, take care of the, the tenant. I think that kind of falls back on the, the owner of the, the rental property. So I, I don't know, how do you make one size fit all? I mean, I am trying to be very sympathetic to everyone's concerns, but. You know, at some point, I mean, we all can't live in nineteen forty-eight forever, there's a lot of houses and we are getting older. And you can tell that one house up there on Cozer, they basically took it right down to the studs and, and turned it into a magnificent house and. Yeah, I mean, we gotta keep up with the times in some degree to make it inviting for, you know, newer families. But also, we're not trying to chase out uh, residents that have been here forever, so it's, oh, I understand that and, and I wanna be able to. Try to find one answer that makes everybody happy, but I don't know how you can do it other than trying to nail down what its intended use. I think it's gonna come right back down to, what are you gonna do with this property, what's its intended use? You're not gonna turn it into a dog track or casino. But at the same time, I wanna garage or she shed or a hobby shop in the back, you know, so I guess we're gonna have to focus more on that. And um, you know, I don't know how many properties are gonna be capable, you know, size-wise, geographically. To have a, a, a big building in their back or whatever. I don't think on the east side, there's that much extra room that you're gonna be putting up a forty by sixty building or anything like that. I think it's gonna be primarily on the west side of Sunset, so. And, and the state has been giving us a lot of grief, you know, every time we try to tackle the rental and limit, you know, our rental restrictions. The state comes in and says, no way, so I, I don't know how we can uh, limit anybody to do. You know, what the state's not even letting us do, so it's a slippery slope. Open to anything.
We spent a little over thirty-five minutes on this. And uh, does council wanna continue this discussion during the November meeting? Or do you have a suggestion of, of what the next step could be?
I definitely think we need to probably have another work session on just this topic alone. I mean, that, that's a, just something that we just can't flip the switch. I mean, that's gonna take a lot of, you know, input, you know, like Sylvia said. We do need to listen to residents, but um, you know, I don't think it's gonna be one night, you know, flip the switch, uh, you know, with all the work that has been done. But at the same time, again, we can't live in nineteen forty-eight either, so I think it's gonna take a lot more discussion. And I'm ready to move on to something different right now.
How's that work with the zoning commission? Would they take it up and look at it, or do they need direction first?
They need direction from the city council. Steve, you wanna comment on that, that? They need direction, I mean, you've said that in your report.
And can I, I'm sorry, can I ask Steve?
Oh, Lisa. I'm sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
Since Steve is going to answer your question, can you, Steve, provide us some suggestions? Of what we can do? About.
Yeah, you.
About the trend that I think some of us, all of us see. Of having tailgating enterprises come into town. And I don't, again, I don't mean that you're tailgating on your property.
Right, so here's what I would say, um, if and when the council has sort of a, a clear consensus. Or a direction and, and is, is ready as a council to say. Here's what we want the ordinance to say, this is what we want not to have, this is what we want to permit, these are the changes we would like to see. Uh, whether that's in small detail or even sort of big picture, well, then I can take those, that direction and start to come up with something. And that, that the council can review and they can look at it and say, no, that's not what we meant, go do it again and whatever, okay? So getting from where I think we are right now, uh, tonight, to the point where the council is in a position to say. Okay, here are some ideas uh, that we would like to be uh, uh, you know, enunciated, articulated into a working document. You, the council can do various things. Uh, if the council is ready to give that direction, which I've heard pretty much everybody say you're not. Uh, and I understand that, as Doug said, not, not, you know, one night, we need more input, uh, then, uh, if the council's ready, you could give that direction. If the council wants more input, the council has various vehicles for doing that. The council can hold another work session, the council can hold. A public hearing, uh, inform citizens, we're gonna talk about a bunch of stuff, come and tell us what you think. Um, I've said this many times, I'll say it again, but, but the, the way that, this council, uh, the University Heights City Council. Should be very proud in my mind of, of its openness, uh, you know, there are certain things in the Iowa code that require public hearings. And, and sometimes I've talked to Louise, you know, what, what do we do at a public hearing? And I say, you do what you do at every meeting, you let people say their piece, you know, because lots of councils don't do that, all right? But my, my point is, is that, uh, if the council wants to have a formal public hearing on an issue or just have it. Be a set aside portion of a council meeting, the council can do that uh, as a tool for gathering more input. Um, the, another option for the council, and these aren't exclusive one to the other. But another option is to ask the zoning commission to sort of uh, carry the water on that, you know, hey, zoning commission, here's some ideas. Uh, the chair of the zoning commission's here tonight, Pat, uh, so she's hearing everything. I also am a conduit in that regard, I can say to the zoning commission, okay, here, here are some of the things that are on the council's mind, they'd like to hear from you on, on these things. Um, and the, and the zoning commission then can do its work and it uh, can hold public hearings, invite the public to say what they want. It can start uh, making suggested recommendations based upon what it hears from the community. And what the zoning commissioners themselves uh, believe is the right direction from the city. If that path is chosen, then the zoning commission uh, would make a recommendation of some sort uh, back to the council. That's, that's been the practice, I don't know if it's required to, but I, it would, the, the commission would say to the council, okay, you asked us to look at this and we did. Here's what we think you should do, and, 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 and the here's what you think, here's what we think you should do. Could take the form of very specific ordinance changes, it could take the form of more general things. It could be a question back to you saying, we're kinda going in this direction, is that where you want us to go? Council could say, go whatever direction people are pushing you or you think you ought to go. So anyway, that's sort of the give and take between the council and the zoning commission. The council has prerogative to sort of hang on to this issue, if you wanna say it that way. Gather the input the council believes it needs to make recommendations, to make changes and move forward. Um, historically, the council uh, most times, but not every time, has said, you know, let's, let's use the zoning commission. You know, we have enough on our plate at a given moment, the zoning commission uh, is kinda good at this, they've done it before. Um, and let's ask the zoning commission to look into some of these issues for us, but you're not required to do that, it's your prerogative.
I don't hear that the council's decided a direction to go exactly yet, and maybe. The next meeting is in two weeks, correct? It's November eight. And we can continue discussion then and determine. Get more public input then and uh, maybe have a public hearing and maybe uh. Some of what Steve, I don't know, I'm just trying to. Uh, you know, take in what everyone said, what the public has said and uh. Help council decide on a direction. What, what, what do some of you think?
I would like to hear from uh, the, the zoning uh, commission, I'd like to hear what feedback they're getting, I'd like to. Hear some public input, um, but mainly I'd like to hear from the zoning commission because they're the first people that are gonna hear, hey, can I build this? Or hey, can I do that? I, I'd like to know how many requests they're getting and, and what kind of feedback they're getting, so yeah, I definitely need more input for sure. Another work session, sure.
What do others think? Lisa, you said a little bit, what, where do you wanna go from here? What are you thinking?
I'd like thoughts, recommendations, something about how we can. have some amount, reasonable amount of what Tim calls creativity. And yet, in other parts of town, make sure that we're protecting the residents who I don't, I mean, I keep hearing this. Our houses are all too old and out of date, but I love my house. You know, I do. Money pit that it is. And I look at the people that are behind this property that wants to have the tailgating garage, and we know it's not a garage and I worry about how are they gonna deal with that? What privacy do they have when there's a a deck on top of the garage that's next to their property? I mean, I think we have to be concerned and not have this idea that everybody in town is gonna remodel their house and build all these things. Most people are just trying to get by right now and live where they live without with a some amount of enjoyment of their property and not having intrusive people who aren't buying property because they care about the neighborhood. So I don't know how to address.
When going to the zoning commission, I really want them to have direct uh, communication from the council of what they want to do. And I don't know if we've hammered that out enough tonight unless council uh, feels different and can do that.
Is the primary concern rental property owners enterprising tailgating and not permanent dwellers? Or I mean, is it a differentiation there? Or and if so, how how different can the zoning ordinances be for each without being discriminatory?
Not very. To me, to me, it is a difference. I mean, it is a difference. I mean, that that's it comes down to that owner owner or a landlord. I mean, that's the big difference in my mind. I mean, if you're doing an enterprise and yet you live in the house, at least you're you're there and you have to deal with your neighbors, you know, you you're the one who has to have the relationship with your next door neighbors, you know. Versus if you're a, if you're a landlord and you have a rental property and, you know, your tenants can stay in their house, but you do the whole rooftop garage, tailgate thing, you don't have to deal with anything. You just take the checks and leave and you don't have to worry about the community aspect of it. I think that's the part that I'm that's what I'm fighting for is that to keep that part, so.
And when I, when I say, sorry, tailgating enterprise, I don't, you know, I don't mean somebody that just wants to tailgate on their property.
Right.
I'm talking about somebody buying a property so they can come to town every game day, kick the tenants out. Have a, you know,
Yeah.
have something going on with their selling things they're not supposed to sell and you know, they're not concerned about the neighborhood or the neighbors. And yeah, I'll I'll save the rest of what I have. So.
I would say that even though you may see a difference between an owner that lives there and a non-resident owner, the regulations can be the same for either property, for both properties.
It it back to intended use. I I think that's the the
Yes, yes.
Equalize both sides. It's intended use. I mean, I mean, I absolutely think that's really the only way you can look at anything to make both sides. Otherwise, it will come across as discriminatory. So I think intended use is gonna be your your friend here.
Uh, Steve, one of your suggestions was, I mean, if we have a another uh, work session, I mean, that would be next week. Sometime next week. I I'm not I'm thinking we might as well go to the council meeting and uh, work some more in that. Give thirty forty minutes to that and go from there. What was that option, Steve?
Yeah, so I, that would make sense to me and it, you know, I say this a lot, but I should say it a lot. It's it's the council's decision, certainly not mine. But it would make sense to me, what I hear you saying is, you know, we we need to give the zoning commission direction. If we're gonna enlist the zoning commission's help, we're not really at a point where we know exactly what direction we want to give them. I would say that you keep talking about it as a council and devoting some segmented time at the next regular meeting since it's two weeks away. Uh, that would make perfect sense to me, sort of pick up where you're left off. I could try to summarize some things. Um, you know, give you some some starting points or, you know, identification, anchors, whatever you want to call them. To say, yeah, we'd kind of like to, you know, have the zoning commission look at this issue or this issue or these four issues. And as that, I guess, as that evolves, then I think you're in a position that if you do want to ask the zoning commission for some guidance, that you're you're able to provide the kind of direction that I think Louise was talking about, that that you ought to give the zoning commission so that they're not just sitting there saying, what is it you want us to look at? So I would think having a further discussion at the council meeting would make a lot of sense.
How does counts, how does some of the council feel about that?
Right.
I see everybody nodding. Okay, very good. And uh, did anybody else from the public want to speak on this at all? I, it's really hard in this because we don't have not, we we don't always see raised hands or whatever. Okay. Because
Uh, I'm, my name's Jerry Fing and and I live, I live right behind the property that you're all talking about. And I just had a couple of suggestions. Uh, basically uh, on that particular property, the person that owns it, his son lives there, so you know, it's it's not a tenant, it's his son, but it's still, I mean, it's very obvious to me that it's a party garage and you know, and and I'm okay with that. But what they really should do, simple, is what happens is they start having parties at eight in the morning and the noise goes until, you know, a lot of people don't go to the game. They have a big TV. So if they just had some sort of ordinance that said, okay, you gotta shut this thing down so many hours after the game, you know, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's, you know, the last, I mean, they already have some pretty good sized parties there. Because they have an outside TV and it's just, uh, you know, I mean, I have nothing against parties, but I like parties, but I mean, it goes for from often, if the games are at eleven o'clock, they'll start at six. And they get louder and drunker and beer cans end up in my yard and people are hopping the fence and, you know, stuff like that. So if they can somehow just have a a rule that, you know, at some time you just shut the party down and enough noise, turn the the giant speakers off and I I don't know. It's certainly their property and they should be able to do what they want, but it's, it is very intrusive. And if they build their deck, it's gonna be a real problem, which, you know, they're just gonna they're fifteen feet up, three feet from the back of my property. We we tend to leave on football days, so. But anyhow, they do need some sort of ordinance to curtail parties and they can shut bars down, so. You know, I mean, you know, it, you know, it's a usually a happy event and I, you know, I don't have any problem with it. When you get a bunch of young people with alcohol and and the game's not going good or it's going good, you know, there's, it gets pretty lively, so.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah.
For your input. Is anybody, anybody else want to speak right now? We're gonna, we're gonna move to the next subject and maybe people will want to speak about that. And Steve's gonna talk a little bit about uh, tailgating related issues in town and things that we see happening. Steve?
Yeah, sure. So I tried to identify a few things, uh, you know, they, some of them sort of dovetail with the prior, the prior discussion just now about the the garage slash the tailgating venue. Um, I've been the city attorney for a long time, so some of this is personal observation. Uh, you know, I I don't, you know, I don't remember kind of ever seeing uh, flags that just, you know, there's plenty of flags that said, go Hawks and things like that, but they tended to go up on Fridays and come down on Sundays and and it seems like there's bigger signs that that say more about, you know, beer and and partying and and go Hawks too. Uh, and and tailgating. And so I, so some of that's personal observation. I'm not, I'm not making a judgment except to say I think it's been a change over time. Uh, but but there have been inquiries, uh, you know, so I've heard from some of the people on the council, hey, what about this? Somebody asked me, and then I get calls once in a while about that. So that that would be one example of things. And 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 I will say that historically, we have seen, you know, changes. Uh, I don't want to take you through all this history. Uh, some of you lived through it, some of you didn't. But um, you know, there were, there was, the council really struggled with what to do with portable toilets. You know, the the one side was pretty clearly saying, well, biology is what it is. If you don't give them a place to go, they're gonna find someplace and other people saying, well, if somebody's hosting these parties, they can provide a facility and and uh, and that that, you know, kind of went went back and forth and um, uh, you you know, the issues have become uh, more uh, I guess I'll use the word offensive, you know, you didn't have some of the behaviors twenty-five, thirty years ago that you're tending to hear about sort of regularly now. Um, so I think there's changes. We'll say it that way. Um, I know that there are people, um, I I I don't want to sell my brother out, but uh, but my brother was in town and was was meeting some college buddies because he went to school at South Dakota State. And I dropped him off at a at an address and and then in University Heights and he, after the game, I said, so what? So how how was it? Oh, great. You know, you just pay this amount and then they just feed you and they, there's this whole setup. And then I I said to him, not knowing whether I wanted to know the answer, I said, were they serving you alcohol? And he said, no, 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 no alcohol, just, you know, sodas and water, but they had sandwiches and burgers and, you know, and and all they had to do was pay for the the pace, place to spot, to park, and they got all that. So and then I've heard a couple of other situations where, you know, what had been the, you know, parking, uh, which has always been permitted and and setting up a barbecue grill or however you're doing it, has turned into more of an enterprise, you know, like come to our place, just pay us a certain amount of money and we'll 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 feed you, we'll take care of you. So that's something that I that I had heard of, uh, and and uh, you may have seen or heard of too. Um, and and then there have been, there have been uh, comments that I've seen and received uh, to some extent about why does the city, you know, not let people park on a street? Uh, city streets on game days, uh, you're kind of, kind of making people who need a place to park, uh, you know, pay money to citizens to park on their yards and and why do you force them to do that when you know, city streets are there for parking and and why can't people just park on the street? So those were some of the issues that 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 I I've been hearing about myself and and I'm I'm guessing there's probably others, many others that maybe you've been hearing about. Um, it it's it's been not a, not a yearly occurrence, but a frequent uh, occurrence about this time in the football season or maybe after the football season for the council to just sort of revisit where, how did the, how did the season go? Check in with the chief police, check in with some other uh, other people that you know, just, you know, take the temperature of how things went, what kinds of things maybe we should look at, uh, council should look at changing or considering changes to uh, that that's uh, that's the spirit in which I guess I would uh, uh, identify those particular items.
Would anyone from council or staff like to comment on those? Have you noticed that in the area? Those changes?
I haven't noticed. I mean, I've only been here since two thousand sixteen, but I haven't. I can imagine there's changes for the worse, but I can speak to the parking on the street question. I mean, when I first moved in, Karen Drake went up and down the west end of Cozer and asked everybody how we wanted to handle that and at that time, there was parking on the street. And the discussion was that you can either let people park on the street, they'll tailgate on the street, they'll leave their mess in the street. Or you can get them off the street and a few people can profit from it and the mess will be in their yard and they can clean it up, but they made some money off it too. So I, and that was fine with me. I don't park people in my yard, but I don't have a mess to clean up either.
Uh, people park on my street, one side of the street. Years and years ago, they parked on both sides of the street. Uh, uh, west of Sunset. And but the fire chief said he can't get emergency vehicles down there. And so now we only have parking on one side of the street. So west of Sunset, there is parking on you know, on one side of the street.
So I remember Karen Drake coming, she came to the council, that was my first term. But um, is that true that people can't, I mean, you say they were, but can they tailgate in the street? No.
I think they would leave a pile of cans in the street and their garbage is the thing. Maybe they wouldn't tailgate all day. But they would leave a mess.
So I guess once again, I have this little thing that I prepare and I, as I said, I talked to fifteen to twenty resident homeowners around town. Their questions and concerns about tailgating included porta potties in plain sight, which we do have an ordinance about. They reminded me. Which I am well aware of. Noise, which they described as bellowing, screaming, loud music with and without explicit lyrics. And we do have a noise ordinance. Crowds and paraphernalia making it difficult to walk down sidewalks and we did address that also. Um, people described the years in the early to mid twenty teens, and that was before you moved here, Tim. When game day became a huge problem, not only in the east neighborhood where I live, but also in the west neighborhood and north of Melrose. And that is when the city council started to try to address these issues with a porta potty ordinance. The game day expectations, which you all got from me, it's on the website, um, in my early report. Football sea, pre football season report. So some of my neighbors talked about, they just, like I said, they don't want to come and talk and have their neighbors know that there's because they just don't want people to think ill of them, so. Um, they told me about some of them dreading game day, having to leave town for mental health, hunkering down in their houses. Some said they feel like they have to stand guard on their property. You know, imagine feeling that way about where you live. So I know that feeling. I felt that way. I'm currently in the hunker down in my house category. So one person phrased it this way, if the city would enforce policies so residents have the freedom to not be unwilling participants, game day would be tolerable, even enjoyable. So most commenters of these, you know, it's not a majority of town. I'm not saying that. I'm not saying we cancel game day, nothing of the sort, but most commenters, even ones who park said the city should enact and enforce policy that addresses game day. Some did say we should limit or abolish tailgating. And I'm gonna I think I'll stop there. It's just, you know, east of Sunset, close to the stadium, we have huge issues. And I think what I've heard from people is we we could at least make sure we're abiding by our ordinances.
Would anyone from the public like to comment on uh, tailgating in University Heights? I I don't see anybody.
Louise, this is Sylvia and for the council, I mean, we had a lot of discussion around um, tailgating. I don't see a problem. Um, tailgating, I don't see a problem with it. I'm agreeing with Jerry, it's perfectly fine. Uh, within the ordinary bounds of, you know, customary behavior.
Thank you Sylvia. I had to step out for a minute, but enforcing the noise ordinances would be helpful if it's possible to do that.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Uh. I want to make sure everybody gets to speak on whatever subject they want to speak on. And uh. With the parking, chief, could you review some of the parking? I mean, I think parking. Where it is during the weekday, it's very similar game day. Is, I mean, other than, uh, you know, one hour parking. Or two hour parking, uh, could you?
Sure, as far as.
Define some of that?
As far as the game day specific restrictions, we have very little issue with it. We. Uh, the typical citations that we write are for on-street parking where it's prohibited. Uh, for private parking, uh, without the person in control of the property's permission or consent. You know, two cars will pull up and, and pull up on the parkway and park, uh, and fire hydrant parking. Uh. East of Sunset Street, there is no on-street parking allowed and west of Sunset Street. With the exception of the three hundred block of Cozer, which is also no parking allowed, uh, street parking is allowed. Uh, I was forwarded some concerns from, or some comments from next door about, uh. A resident, uh, an address along the Haskell on one particular game, it was related, was putting cones out to prohibit parking. Along a certain section of the street. I did not notice it that day, I'm always on foot in that particular game, I did not get it west of Sunset Street. Uh, we have monitored it since then, it is not occurring. There are some residents that will put, put cones along. The grass along the curb. Uh, which I could see where that would have the appearance that parking is prohibited, but nothing is in the street. And no one is out there denying cars a place to park. Uh, so from a, an enforcement, uh, from a compliance standpoint, and that's what enforcement should go towards. But from a compliance standpoint, uh, I don't have any issues with game day parking. Uh, the way your current, the way University Heights current ordinances read, certainly much like, you know, Attorney Ballard said, it's, it's up to council as. Whether they want to modify those or not, uh, but what we have right now is working and is enforceable on game days.
Thank you. Um. I think it's good to start about, talk about tailgating now. I mean, we still have. Three more games and uh. And then we should continue to talk about it on the offseason. But. I'm hoping that uh, you'll talk to your neighbors. And they'll tell you what some of the issues are. So as we move forward. With this, we're aware of uh. Of people's issues. Residents in town. I definitely think it has improved, but. Some things aren't being enforced. Uh, I've been told. And so. I think, I mean, what would council? What does council think about moving forward with talking about tailgate issues?
I think there are still some things that we need to tweak. Um, because our ordinances aren't exactly being followed the way they were intended. And the porta potty ordinance says you don't have porta potties that stay all season in plain sight. And I think we should tweak that. To make it work, actually work. So, I mean, many residents said, I thought we had a porta potty ordinance. They sit out here all the time. We have residents that have neighbors porta potties next to their garage or next to their. You know, fence where they have a garden or. You know, I think we could maybe. Try to ask people to be better neighbors, but it does need to be tweaked. The noise ordinance, you know. People apparently aren't aware we have a noise ordinance. People can call. Call the police about anything that they have issues with. It's not a bad thing to do. So.
Anyone else from council like to comment on any of this?
No, I, I have a problem with tailgating, but uh, I, I agree with Lisa that uh. You know, unfortunately, we do live next to the, the football stadium and that's just ugly facts of life, but. Um, I, I think enforcement of noise ordinances would be very paramount to, you know. Keeping a, a level of civility to the neighborhood, I think. Um, just because it's game day doesn't mean you can throw the rulebook to the wind. I mean, absolutely. I mean, if. Right now, you couldn't have a party, like, we look out the window right now, there's no parties going on, and if there was, and it was loud, you'd be calling the police to say, hey. You need to shut that down. So whether it's a game day or not a game day. Technically, you, you know, as long as you behave and and you're civil and and you're respectful of your neighbors, it shouldn't be an issue, but if you're not respectful. It doesn't matter if it's a game day or not, you, you gotta learn how to be respectful and and keep your noise level down, or it should be shut down.
Would anyone else like to comment?
Um, I just have a quick question. We have a, a problem with people trespassing on our property on game day because they cut through from Melrose. I don't know how you would enforce that, but is there anything in place to just keep people from walking through? And, you know, well, we've had our property damaged as well from people who, who cut through.
This is, this is Chief Kelsey. The way the criminal trespass ordinance or criminal trespass law is written at state of Iowa is that. Basically, people have to be. It is an intent crime. People have to know that they're trespassing and be given an opportunity not to trespass. And, and Attorney Ballard can correct me if I'm wrong, but if people were walking through your property, Deb. Then I would need to respond, I would need to stop and speak with them, I would tell them that they weren't welcome to be there and they needed to leave or be charged with trespass. And that if they returned, they could be charged with trespass. So. It's on game day for the situation you described, it is. It is not really a workable solution to stop people from walking through. If there's seventy thousand different people that are all walking through. Unless I deal with the same one twice, or the same one twice in a season, or, or next year. Where I can document that they've been basically told that their property that they're not welcome to be at, and given an opportunity to leave, and then they refuse to leave or return. Uh, they can be charged. That's why you see, for example, properties trespassed with no trespassing signs so that it is dealing with right up front to that. Communication aspect of it. If they're having to climb an eight-foot fence to get to your property. Then again, while it's a physical barrier and not a sign that in and of itself, of course, would consider to be. I guess adequate notice that they weren't meant to be there. I would still encourage you to call, we can still come down there, we can still address it. I would hope that you wouldn't see the same person twice in a season, but I, I, I think it's unrealistic for me to tell you that it will never happen again, as far as somebody walking through your property.
Just a quick question on the eight-foot fences, is, is that something that you need to go to the board of adjustment for, or is that you go straight to the city council to ask for? An eight-foot fence, because I know there's a foot limit?
And I'm sorry, I don't know what the city restrictions are on fences, but I'm saying as far as.
Okay.
For example, a property, uh, like a U-store type unit where they have it fenced and gated and somebody is having to do something other than just. Walk across a, a piece of turf to enter the property, they're having to do some sort of, uh, I guess overt act to enter.
Uh, right. Yeah, and I just, that is something we've considered because a six-foot fence is easy for a drunk college student to scale. And jump over, and we've actually had people pulled over on Melrose and run from the police. Through our yard, multiple occasions, sometimes in the middle of the night. Would an eight-foot fence be helpful to the police or not helpful? I guess, and if we wanted to ask for an eight-foot fence, I guess I'm asking the council, do we need to come directly to you, or how do we? How do we go about asking for that?
And from a charging position, whether it's six foot or eight foot, I wouldn't care. If it's, on the other hand, uh. You know, a single strand of chain or rope that is a foot and a half off the ground and looped from one post to another that can easily be stepped over. That's perhaps less convincing in my probable cause of a charge.
Steve, why don't you?
Oh, sorry.
I, I'm sorry, Lisa, you want to speak?
Steve's probably more authoritative than I'm in. I'm just looking at the website. Um, ordinance one oh five. Let's see, a fence over six feet in height, you need a permit from the city building official. So Steve can elaborate on that.
Yeah, so you can, you can. You can, uh. You can ask for, for, but from the, from Terry Gertt, really, uh. You can make a request from him. Uh. The, the board of adjustment has some authority to grant, uh, sort of variances to that requirement. Um, I, I don't know the lay of the land with your property and, you know, I. So I don't know if what I'm going to say makes any sense, but yeah, doing something like fencing or, you know, game day fencing where you put something up, so, you know, maybe for that day. Those are things that came to my mind, but yeah, the fencing opportunity might be the best one.
Okay, thank you to both of you.
Louise, I've got a question for Steve.
Okay, Mike.
Um, what is e- exactly the limits on the noise ordinance? Um. I know that we're, we're at a twenty olive court. You know, people got TVs and are watching and talking and stuff, but when the game starts, all the noise kind of goes away because most people go to the game. So what is, I, I know there's a time limit and stuff, but what is exactly, how, how high can the noise level be?
I, I, I think what our ordinance is, uh, how it's drafted, the idea is if you can, if you can hear it in your neighbor's yard, or if, 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 if somebody, but. You know, we use the police, the police officers as an example, if they can stand on the sidewalk off your property and still hear it. Uh, that's, that's too loud. You know, I, I'll be, I'll let Chief Kelsey explain, uh. You know, how, how that gets really en- enforced. Uh, my sense is there's a whole lot of rule of reason with that. Uh, but the, but that's the general rule.
Well, with that said, Steve, how do you? How do you even enforce that rule? Because. Every place along where there's tailgating going on, you can hear it, you know. Uh, that distance, I mean, that's. Pretty much the way it is.
So Mike, this is, this is Troy Kelsey again, and, and Steve Ballard is correct. There is a lot of discretion, particularly on game days, because it is difficult to enforce. Uh, if people are standing along the property line and whispering, they potentially could be heard across. Now that, that's a very extreme example. What is a more realistic example is you have. You have sixty thousand people in the stands, plus, you know, maybe another ten to twenty thousand outside. You have the band playing, you have, uh, the P A system going at, and this is all pregame. Going, going, uh, in Kinnick Stadium. And your property is a perfectly prime example of that, that is all flooding over your property. Of course, the, the residents and guests that are in the backyard of your property are going to have to raise their voices. To be heard, or going to have to turn their radios up louder in order to hear their pregame, or the game before our game. Or their favorite country music. So it does become, it's, it's not as simple as just. You know, pulling out some sort of device to measure the level of sound. And there is no reasonableness, there is officer discretion. When, when our community, which is normally less than twelve hundred people, is occupied by tens of thousands of people. All trying to converse with one another, uh, within a stone's throw, with, within. A few feet of one another, plus being washed over by the sounds of the street and the sounds of the stadium. I think it is absolutely unrealistic for me to say, I can stand on this property and hear the sounds of. Somebody's voice, or somebody's conversation, or somebody's TV, or somebody's radio from across the property lines. So the officers are put in the unenviable position of having to decide. You know what? That, that I think is extreme. We're going to go up and we're going to talk to somebody and we're going to ask them to turn it down. And again, if we, if we don't get compliance, which should be the goal, voluntary compliance, but if we don't get compliance. Then we'll return and we'll address it with something other than a request.
Thank you. Uh. Does anybody else want to make a comment about any of the tailgating issues before we move on to? The last item?
I'll just comment again. Would it be reasonable to rewrite that to where if you're in your own home with your windows shut? And you can clearly hear the lyrics of music, or somebody on a bullhorn and, and the property behind you, that that would constitute. You know, breaking a noise ordinance, can we? Rewrite it in some way that would, would address game day?
I think that we can do that with what's existing, Deb, but I mean, if, if we respond to that exact situation that you talked about. And I went to the property behind you that they were using the bullhorn, or there was excessive amplified noise coming from, amplified. Then I would say, I don't care whether it's a TV coming out of the garage or what it is, you need to turn that down. And if we return, you could, you could potentially be issued a citation. I mean, I, I. The goals in my mind should always be compliance, not how many citations that we could write. Uh, so I, I think what we have is workable right now. I just think it's. I, I just think it's naive to think that I can walk down Melrose or Cozer or Olive Court. And stand on one property and, and write citations to, to any other property that I can hear from there.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, the golf cart. Possibly looking at an ordinance to allow golf carts to be operated in University Heights. And Steve, uh, you put that in your October report and in the report today, would you review that?
Sure, I'm happy to. Um, you know, I, I. Got a little carried away with my list there, I wasn't really planning on that when I started writing it, but. Uh, and, and Chief Kelsey sent around materials, uh, some of which I consulted when I put that list together, but there are other examples of golf court ordinances. I guess my point in making that long list was just to give you some things to think about and so, you know, a menu, yeah, we'd like this, no, we don't want that, if you want to do it at all. Um, you have, you have quite a bit of, uh, of discretion. Uh, under the Iowa law in terms of how. Uh, you know, when and if you would permit golf carts to be operated on, um. On city streets, and so. Yeah, like, as I said, I mean, I just intended this to kind of be, um, uh, you know, a menu of, uh, of items that, that the council could start to. Again, pick and choose and say, yeah, you know, we like something that would have these things and we're not so interested in that. I could start putting an ordinance together, council can look at it, modify it, uh, you know, do whatever you want and. And you can go, you can do, you can do that picking and choosing any way you'd like. I mean, you can sit here and go through things tonight or some other night. Um, yeah, I mean, if council people want to contact me individually. That's, that's okay, but it's kind of unworkable because, you know, somebody says this and somebody else says that. Um, so I think there has to be, yeah, or you can, you can sort of appoint a committee of the members of the council, work, work. You could have two members of the council and, and maybe the mayor, if, if that's desirable from her standpoint and from the council's standpoint. Work with me and Chief Kelsey to come up with a recommended ordinance, and then you could, uh, consider that ordinance and go back to the list yourself and say, well, what about this part? And, you know, we didn't think that was that, that important. Well, I do, and you know, that. That's a process that I would, uh, sort of describe. Sorry, it's kind of vague, but, but, uh, it's really a lot of, uh, a lot of blank canvas for the council.
Uh, thank you, Steve. Uh, there are members of the public. Uh, I've asked some people in my neighborhood about it. Uh, would anybody from the public like to speak about golf carts? Uh, maybe they will later. Um, okay, uh. Bobby, you brought it up initially, the idea, and uh. What are you thinking?
Yeah, I. I mean, basically. I. I'm thinking, you know. I don't, I guess, big picture, I think, I don't really have much hesitation allowing golf carts to be. Um, used on University Heights streets, especially seeing how the state code allows it. Um. I think that, um, you know, the one variable. Um, that's specific to University Heights is just how it could or may or may not impact, you know, game days, really. I mean, football and that type of thing and. I mean, football and that type of thing, and, you know, just like everything, you know, we don't want any of the things we do to be a detractor, right? And so, um, uh, and I think that we could, the nice thing about all this stuff is if it becomes a problem, you can walk it back or you can take it away or you can change it. I mean, we have the ability to do that, and so personally, I guess my, my thoughts on, you know, golf carts and allowing them is just, let's just adopt the Iowa code and um, and then, and, and then just take it from there unless Troy has any more specific recommendations based on the time he's spent thinking about it and what would be helpful for, you know, us and U, U Heights specifically.
From a public safety standpoint, I, I don't have any overwhelming concerns. The state has done this, Solon has done this, North Liberty has done this, uh, I'm aware of other communities outside the county have done it, and it is not, none of them have been an issue. And conversations that I've had with, with other persons and other council members, and there's no doubt about it, if, if, you know, you're on a bicycle and get hit by a Mack truck, it's not good to be on the bicycle. If you're in a golf cart and hit, got, hit, get hit by a car, it's not good to be on the golf cart. But if I'm on my motorcycle or my bicycle and get hit by any of the above, it's not good to be on my motorcycle. The states and other communities have reviewed this, have enacted it and have passed it. So from a public safety standpoint, I, I don't have any concerns. North Liberty and Solon in particular, and I shared that material, took two very different approaches. Uh, Solon chose to fairly basically adopt the state code with only a few additional restrictions. North Liberty chose to uh add some additional restrictions and to also in the ordinance codify some of the, the already state laws. There's some advantages to that, there's some redundancy to it. Uh, I don't have a preference from a law enforcement perspective, which way you do it. Uh, that said, I think that Solon and North Liberty both give some pretty good ideas on, on restrictions that council might consider as far as, you know, everything from hours of operation to age of passengers to, you know, Sol, or North Liberty was more restrictive on the equipment that they required uh, person to have uh on their golf cart. Registration, that is again, totally, everything is totally up to council, there's some advantages and disadvantages. Uh, it would be a program that we needed to administer, but it would also be easier for me to track information for council for uh reassessment down the road, so I, I don't have any overriding concerns, nor do I have any, what I would think would be critical recommendations, other than from a public safety standpoint, again, I, I think that it is very workable, and I think in our community with a speed limit of maximum speed limit of twenty-five, I, I just don't see an overriding public safety concern that police would need to guide the conversation.
So I guess I'll, I'll offer the, my usual contrarian position. Thank you, Doug. So, you know, some of the residents that I talked to, you know, they all talked about safety and Troy just addressed that. But we do live by that big thing down the street called Kinnick. And I mentioned this in the last meeting and I was somewhat surprised that some of the people I talked to had a similar idea, that having golf carts on game day, transporting people back and forth could possibly have the effect of moving, tailgating into neighborhoods that don't currently experience game day issues the way that we do in our neighborhood, which could also encourage the type, type of thing that we're talking about, the tailgating enterprises, the properties being purchased, even maybe in the west neighborhood for the purpose of having a tailgating enterprise. I mean, you have a game day crib LLC down there, and that would be my concern because I wouldn't want people having to deal with what people on the east side of town, especially the extreme east side deal with. When, you know, why would we enact policy when, you know, to, that might possibly have that effect? And it's not going to have it immediately, like everything in University Heights kind of sneaks up on you over time. You know, so my suggestion would be, let's work on the zoning ordinance and other remedies, other remedies to the, our tailgating issue, look at what other things we can do with the zoning ordinance to try to not be so restrictive, yet some, some amount of restriction um, and wait to take out game day golf carts or golf carts in general, until we have a better idea of how that's all going to play out. So, that's just my, and on that.
How do we handle, uh, maybe this question for you, chief, uh, as far as golf cart versus pedestrian? You know, if, if uh, the golf cart owner, does it, do they have to show some kind of proof of uh automobile insurance, or is it homeowner, homeowner's insurance that would cover their golf cart if they ran into a, you know, a person did bodily damage? How, how does that handle, get handled?
Well, the state of Iowa says that any motor vehicle that's operated on the roadway in the state of Iowa is required to have insurance. Uh, the least liability insurance. The state of Iowa does not require you to prove that upon registration, but it is a secondary violation. So if I were to stop you for speeding or to have some reason to have contact with you, I can ask you for proof of insurance, and I can write you a, a violation of the traffic code if you don't have it. If you were involved in an accident and are unable to produce insurance, then the fine effectively doubles. Uh, and you are also required, the Department of Transportation will require your pro, uh, post, post accident if you didn't have insurance, a, a bond of sorts uh to cover any damages that might have been. If you're a community, if, if as a community, you decide to allow golf cart operation, and further, if you decide that it would be a city permitted, and by that, I mean, not that council allowed it, but that you had to come into city hall to the police department to obtain a permit, much like a Marietta parking permit, then that is one of the things that I would verify, I would verify that there was some sort of insurance in place and that we had owner contact information uh that the golf cart itself had. The state says adequate, adequate brakes plus the slow-moving triangle on it, plus the flag, plus any additional equipment restrictions that council decided to impose. So that could all be done at time of, I guess, issuance of a local permit if you required that. But even here, regardless of that, the state does require you, if you're operating a motor vehicle, uh, to have liability insurance.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, um, you know, I'm thinking about what you said, I kind of, I don't disagree with your, the intent or the, you know, spirit of what you're saying. My gut tells me it won't become that big of a deal, now maybe that's just me being naive and idealistic, but I, I just don't, you know, I just don't see that being a thing. And if it does become a thing to where it's, you know, it's, it's obnoxious and we don't want it, and it's problematic and so on and so forth, like, then I see us, that's the nice thing about University Heights, I feel like is we're, we do have that benefit of being able to change things in that way, and so that's kind of how I think about it.
Does anyone else want to comment or? About this?
Mayor Prom, if, if I could comment, uh Brennan McGrath here.
Oh, hi Brennan.
Hi, um, Lisa, I just wanted to uh personally invite you to come to one of our uh tailgate functions down here at uh three twenty-seven Cozer. Um, I think it would, it would give you some clarity on, on what the situation is further west on Cozer, and what I can reassure you is that it's, it's a much quieter, uh, as you get closer to the stadium, uh, things get a little wilder. Uh, but as you get further out, uh, we get more families here. Um, and, and I would just encourage you to observe firsthand um, what's kind of going on further west and um, and actually seeing, and, and hopefully it would reassure you uh as far as this expansion idea, the fear of that that you have. Um, in, in full honesty, um, I had no idea that, that there was a restriction on golf carts uh when we first rented a golf cart and started transporting um some folks that we have parking with us. And, and that whole idea was, was born out of the fact that we have folks that are um quite literally diehard uh Hawkeye fans that uh show up uh in uh walkers uh with oxygen tanks. Uh, we have a gentleman who's a double amputee. Um, these folks could not attend the game. Um, I, I won't go into the full elaboration of all the restrictions there are about getting into the handicap accessible uh facilities at the stadium, but they're, they're quite uh financially restrictive, and they're restrictive on the amount of people they allow there. And, and quite honestly, on the other side of the bridge, uh, university provides this, these cart, um, these cart services for folks uh that are parking all around uh Kinnick Stadium to our east. And so, um, we, we originally rented this cart um so we could transport some of those folks, and in reality, we have other folks that, that hop on the cart as well. Like I said, I, I was not uh aware that, that there were restrictions on carts, I thought there was really just no ordinance. And, and so I apologize for that, but I've worked very closely with the chief and um with our sergeant of police and making sure that our cart is fully compliant as a, as a on-street motor vehicle. We comply uh with all the, the rules of the road. And quite honestly, I think that's a much safer alternative um and, and provides uh transportation uh on the street that, that works really well uh for folks that, that desperately need it. And um, so without going much further into it, I, I, I hope, I, I truly feel that the community um has, has a good perspective on this, but I would like to um, uh, you know, kind of dispel any of the the negativities or things that, that you might think about going along with this. So um, I would, I'd strongly encourage you to just stop down um and, and we can kind of show you around.
Oh, I appreciate that Brennan, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness there. I guess I'm just a worst-case scenario kind of person. And honestly, when we moved in, in two thousand, we inherited people that parked in our yard, and it was nice and family-oriented. And it, you know, like I said, it, it went downhill after a period of time and got pretty bad. So that's just how I'm looking at it, and I wouldn't want that to happen down there. I wouldn't want it to be, well, we can have golf carts and we can purchase this property that's for sale and that's how I'm looking at it, but I'm thinking, you know, there's probably other council members that disagree with me, so. But I do appreciate what you said, Brennan.
Would anyone else like to speak? Would council want to give direction at this time, or do you want to talk about it again at the council meeting or? I don't have a feel about what everyone thinks about it, other than uh, a few.
Um, I, I, I'm okay with moving forward with uh allowing golf cart usage. Um, I can tell you, you know, having lived in a few small towns in Iowa in my lifetime before coming to Iowa City, uh, every town that ever has had a golf cart ordinance allowed, I tell you, it, it really makes it a, a more friendlier town where, you know, in evenings, folks like to drive around in their streets and stop and visit with the neighbors and chat with them while they're outside breaking leaves or whatnot. And it really does connect a, a lot of neighbors better than, you know, like you say, getting around, you know, for older people, that's walking may not be an option, but a golf cart kind of, kind of hits both things, you know, you're allowed to drive a golf cart around, but you're also able to visit with your neighbors, and it really gives it a more hometown feel. You know, when you can visit with your neighbors, okay, it's not the same when you drive around in your car and it's, it's, it's just different where. So I, I'm, I'm really in favor of moving forward with uh allowing golf carts in University Heights at this time, within, you know, reason and following a lot of the ordinances that uh we researched on and, and uh following all permits and regulations and whatnot, so that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Louise?
Yes, I'm sorry. This is, this is Sheila, I've got my.
Oh, hi Sheila.
Hey, so I guess I'm, I may be speaking from the, from the public perspective, but um certainly I agree with what Brennan was saying, and that was one of the things that I was somewhat excited to see um when we moved here to University Heights, because I've got a family member that comes down from northeast Iowa and parks in our driveway, and then he walks down to the stadium, um, you know, but he's getting to the point where that's becoming difficult, and so I'd even said, hey, you know, we've got uh golf carts, um, so I appreciate that, and also from the veteran um perspective. Um, but I, and I looked at the iowaleague.org um site, um, and it has the Iowa state law and then suggestions for um cities to consider, and one of them is, you know, that, that permit, um, and then that they're only crossing main roads, not driving on main roads, so I would, you know, consider Sunset as that, but I can send, if that, this is not a site that folks have seen, I can certainly send it, send it to you, um, but I, I, I agree with uh, uh, what I've heard. Um, you know, I understand Lisa's um perspective, and one of my questions would be, is the golf cart allowed to cross University Heights city line to get to the stadium, so it's a door-to-door essentially? Um, and would that have to be addressed in the, in the ordinance? Um, or is it simply, are the ordinance is following state law?
Steve, I think you can speak to it, but it's how the council wants to.
Yeah, right, the council, the council can draft what it wants, uh, Louise, just like you said, I, but as, after it crosses, after a golf cart leaves the city of University Heights, city of University Heights has nothing to say about it. So, and you, so I appreciate it, I understand what you're saying, you know, whatever, when you cross the bridge, I, I think you're on your own. I mean, I don't, I really don't know what Iowa City says, but I know we don't have anything to say about it.
Bobby, how do you think we should handle like the folks at Burtdale, they're kind of landlocked? You know, they would have to travel down uh Melrose to get to.
Yeah, that's a good question, I think, I feel like, because Sheila, we had seen that, um, whatever that was that you mentioned, that they can't travel on kind of arterial streets or whatever, and Troy thought, Troy thought, you know, basically, it wouldn't be an issue with what we have, University Heights, and then, just like the rest of it, if it did become an issue, it's something we can change. Um, I don't think, Troy, do you want to speak to that? Yeah, I'm not, I'm just gonna, yeah, go ahead.
Sure, uh, just a little background. The information that you shared from the League of City, or you referenced from the League of City, I've also shared that with council already, Sheila. And as Attorney Ballard pointed out, also to council information that he provided, while the state does prohibit golf cart usage on certain extensions of state highways, for example, Highway one through Solon is a good example, or nine sixty-five through North Liberty. Uh, it's my understanding that neither Melrose or Sunset are two main arterial streets or extensions of those type of state roadways. So the state would not prohibit council from allowing travel on any roadway in University Heights that council would like to allow. Our current speed limits, our maximum speed limits are twenty-five miles per hour. So again, from a public safety standpoint, some communities such as Solon limits golf cart speeds to twenty-five miles an hour. Uh, North Liberty, for example, does. Uh, North Liberty, for example, does twenty miles per hour. I don't think that it is unsafe, any more unsafe than many other vehicles. A bicycle or a motorcycle, for example, or a moped, uh, for a golf cart to be traveling down Melrose. I also think that, uh, kind of from an anecdotal standpoint in, in watching. And this goes back to bicycles and at various times in the past, when communities have tried to limit or funnel bicycles into certain streets. I think that you'd end up with, for example, Cozer or Golf U being used as this. Golf cart street. I, I game day traffic in, in particular, and these, these conversations tend to be focusing around game day and, and. Tailgating. I, traffic is often bump or stop and go on Melrose and I, I don't think that. Uh, I don't think it is unnecessarily dangerous from a public safety standpoint for the golf cart. If it is adequately marked as the state requires with an orange flag and a slow moving vehicle sign and any other lights or signage that University Heights chooses to require. I think that vehicle can safely be operated on any of the streets in University Heights.
Great. It's great. Thanks, Troy. Tim and, um, Steph, what do you guys think?
Well, I'm leaning towards that we allow it and, um. I like the fact that we can always go back and reevaluate things and change, change things. But I think that it's. It's something we should do. I think it's a positive for our, our community and I'm, I'm for it. Just bottom line for it. Tim?
Yeah, I. I see Lisa's concern. I don't see it catching on. West of Sunset, so I, I support it as well.
So would the rest of the council, I mean, my thinking is, we have to have a, a resolution. Is that what it's called, right?
An ordinance.
It's an ordinance, yeah.
We have to have an ordinance, draft it up or whatever, uh, and that's got to be all legalese. So Steve, you're the only one that can help us with that. And can we just, or is the rest of the council okay with, um, you know, Steve and Troy coordinating to? To write down whatever it is that Troy recommends regarding this, if whether it's permitting. Or no permitting or whatever, or, you know. I, I'm honestly fine, whatever. I just don't want to be overly burdensome to you, Troy and your staff. And then, you know, I, I just also like keeping it simple too, so.
I appreciate that and I think that it can be safely done. I'll, I'll circle back to something Steve said much earlier in this meeting. And that is, uh, I mean. I, it's kind of up to council as far as what restrictions are there. The state ordinance could be written into, and Steve can address this as, well, better than me, but can, can be written, can be adopted by University Heights. Without any additional restrictions, or we can do like, like North Liberty and have it be a one-stop shop and the ordinance states everything. Uh, I just, you know, are, are there certain restrictions that you want? Are, are there, you know, equipment needs that you want above and beyond what the state requires? Or is that the starting point? Or do you just want, when Steve and I work together on this, do you just want there to be blanks at certain spots that, you know, you fill in? For example, the speed limit. I, I, I think if, if Steve's bringing you an ordinance to consider, you probably want it more in a finished form than in a, than a work in progress. So I gue- I guess that's just the guidance that I, that I asked for.
Yeah, let me jump in a minute if I can. Bobby, the thing, I guess what I would say is, I would be in favor. I can't speak for Chief Kelsey. But I, but I put, I place a bet, uh, if the, I, Chief Kelsey and I can work on an ordinance. Why don't you join us? And if, if, if Mayor, Mayor Fromm wants to join, great. If another, you know, we can only have two council people on a committee, otherwise it triggers a public meeting. But I'd like to have some, uh, you know, council mayor input on our, on our drafting committee. And then, yeah, we can put it together easily.
That's great.
Okay. Sounds good. That's great. Okay. Would anyone from the public like to make another comment on anything? At all? Leaf vacuuming is continuing this week. They started around noon today. I haven't been out of the house, but. I was texted that and I texted him back and said, where are you with it? But he apparently. He didn't get back to me yet. So this rain is slowing it down a little bit, but they started before that. So I, that's my only announcement. And then, um, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone, and thanks especially to the public for attending tonight. Thank you.